Good evening. Welcome and thank you for being with us tonight, Monday, October 3rd, for the American Canyon City Council Candidate Forum and Measure A2 and J Information. I am Cynthia Radford of the League of Women Voters of Napa County. Tonight, we are here to help educate Napa County voters by giving you the opportunity to hear from the candidates for this race. While we usually provide in-person forums due to continuing COVID-19 concerns, we are coming to you via Zoom webinar. We are providing Spanish translation via the Zoom interpreter capability. If you wish to listen to the Spanish translation, click the globe-like icon usually on the bottom right of your screen and check Spanish. Our translator for tonight is Delilah Hernandez. We are recording this forum. It will be posted on YouTube, our League of Women Voters website, Facebook, and on our other social media platforms. Per FCC rules, no other recording of this forum or excerpts from the League of Women Voters' recording are allowed. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We are nonpartisan and do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. The League participates in issue advocacy and voter education. If you would like to join us in our work, please visit our website, lwnapa.org for membership information and much more. The League encourages civil discourse. The candidates have all agreed to participate under guidelines set for this forum. They have agreed to confine their remarks to their qualifications and issues and will not resort to defamatory remarks about the other candidate. We also expect all registrants to be respectful of all the candidates. Microphones and video are off for everyone except the candidates and the League of Women Voters Forum team. Please remember to mute yourself when you are not speaking. Our League's team helping with this forum tonight is moderator Bernie Brooks, timekeeper Linda DiDiCarlo, technical host Sherri Thomas. I will now turn the evening over to Bernie.
Thank you, Cindy, and welcome, everyone. We welcome the candidates tonight. We have with us the candidates for the position of American Canyon City Council. There are three candidates for two open positions, and the candidates are Jesse Corpus, Mark Joseph, and David Oro. This League of Women Voter Forum provides an opportunity for our community to learn about the candidates for these positions. We will do this by giving each candidate time for an opening statement, after which we'll have almost an hour for questions, as many as possible, and then finish with each candidate's closing statement. The questions were solicited in advance from the community and League of Women Voters members. Our team screened the questions to avoid duplication and ensure nonpartisanship and civility. The candidates have not seen the questions in advance. And before this forum, we, in random order, we will start with Mark Joseph. And Joseph, and they will be keeping an eye on our timekeeper Linda's screen to know when they have only 30 seconds left. It will be a yellow flash and finally a red screen when the time is up. I retain the right to mute any candidate who continues to run over the allotted time or violates the signed agreement. But we'll start with the opening statements, and the starting order was determined by random before the forum, and then we'll rotate with each question and be reversed for the closing statements. So we will start first. Mark Joseph, please give us a minute and a half for your opening statement.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. Over the last four years, as a member of the city council, we've completed two major planning efforts and moved forward on many of our major challenges. Watson Ranch and the Broadway Corridor studies are now complete, and we're seeing hotels, homes, restaurants, and other businesses under construction or being planned. We're making good progress on traffic with the completion of Devlin Road from Napa to Green Island. Sausal Junction Overpass is under construction, and we're moving our own 29 corridor project into the environmental review phase. Lastly, we're developing strategies to get the Newell Extension built all the way to South Kelly Row. On the drought, we actually reduced the amount of water we used since 2005, even though our population has grown. This is due to recycled water, replacing leaking pipes, and everyone doing their part to conserve. While we stay focused on these priorities, we also need to recognize three new issues, and I hope to have a chance to talk about them tonight. Those issues are climate action, a new approach to governmental services and accountability, and building our bench, grooming the next generation of local leaders. In closing, Cheryl and I have called American Canyon home for almost 30 years. I'm proud to be a part of its growth as a city, starting as Finance Director and then as City Manager. I've been a part of this community, either playing a leadership role in our nonprofits or financially supporting our schools and service clubs, and of course, serving as a member of council. I believe I've been an effective leader for our community, and once again, ask for your support and your vote on November 8th. Thank you.
I believe you're on mute. Is it my turn?
Oh, yes, I was on mute. Yes.
Thank you, thank you. My name is Jesse Corpus. I'm a candidate for City Council for American Canyon. Our city is 30 years old with multiple communities within our population. It has great potential as we move forward into our future. My decision to enter this election is not a reflection of today's leadership. My decision is actually twofold. First, this is a great opportunity to provide change. My decision is to allow my ability to apply my leadership skills, passion, and ideas and experience in development and growth of our city. And then, secondly, with term limits, it creates that space for leadership development and growth within our leadership mentality, to establish fresh ideas while maintaining the implementation and completion of all of our current goals and its vision. I am a servant to the needs of our city and its diverse community. I was, I was, I've lived here in American Canyon area since 1968. I moved my family here in 2007. My children went to school here and actually opened up the first high school. He was the first, my son Justin was in first class, my Julia was in the third class. I currently work as a criminal investigator with the Office of the Pup Defender in Toluana County. My job has its challenges, but it's the search for the truth, and that's the goal. In closing, I'd like to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for allowing this to happen to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. And now, David, your opening statement, one and a half minutes.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for actually putting this forum together. My name is David Oro. I'm running for reelection for City Council. I was born in the Philippines to an American father and a Filipino mother, and I was raised on US bases spanning three continents. Today, I'm surrounded by three generations of my family living in American Canyon. I'm a father, a business owner, and an active community member, and I bring the lessons of service and commitment to this role as council member. Since being elected in 2018, I've been working hard to build the city that we deserve. I've worked to build a town center, invest in the Broadway Corridor, which is Highway 29, open Devlin Road, increase housing for all income levels, and secure an alternate and sustainable water source for our water future through the site's reservoir. Prior to being on council, I was already involved in the community. I chaired the SR29 Gateway Corridor Plan Citizens Advisory Committee, was a founding member of the city's Open Space Advisory Committee, which allowed us to access the wetlands as well as the mountains to the east of town. I served on the Broadway District Specific Plan, campaigned for our schools, and coached youth soccer and baseball. Recently, the Progressive Women of Napa Valley held a Protecting Reproductive Freedom Forum in September. I was the only male candidate to attend that event, and I'm very supportive of women's reproductive rights.
Thank you, David. Sorry, your time is up. You'll have more time for, at some point in closing, I'm sorry. And of course, we will hit on some of these issues. We will now start with the question session. And Jesse, we will start with you with this first question.
Yes, ma'am.
What are your main priorities for American Canyon, and how would you advocate for them?
Well, with American Canyon, probably the main priority is, first off, I'm going to say traffic. Right now, as I said, they have established all the necessary means of establishing a roadway from Newell to South Kelly, also along the 29 corridor. Secondly, is going to be, is going to be, you know, our climate change. It's going to be something that I take very seriously, specifically with regards to our ability to use recycled water, and that's something that we are leading the front of most cities. And then, lastly, I would have to say it's going to be transparency in communication. It's very important that the people that we lead know what the council is doing and in turn, learn from them as they learn from us.
Thank you, and that probably felt kind of quick because now we're down to one minute, so it does go pretty quickly. Okay, and David, to you.
Can you repeat the question, please?
What are your main priorities for American Canyon, and how would you advocate for them?
Yeah, so traffic is a big issue here. I'm advocating for us to build parallel roads. We've waited too long for Caltrans to act, and so we need to extend Newell Drive all the way to Green Island Road, which is on the other side of the bridge, if anybody's familiar with South County. We need to prioritize building our west-side connector. We have a pathway to do that. And now, we have two sides of parallel roads to alleviate traffic in South County. We need the county to help play with this. We need to annex some land and move forward with that. And then, the other thing is, we did a lot of big things. There's some small things I want to do, including improving the safety of our local streets, making us bike-friendly, and investing in our parks.
Thank you very much. And Mark, same question to you.
Okay, well, thank you. Similar priorities. First, traffic, of course. And I have been an advocate of that parallel road system. I've been on the council longer than David, so I've been advocating it for longer, but I do think it's a high priority. But what I would also emphasize is, I am now the Vice Chair of the Napa Valley Transportation Authority. So I'm in a much better position to advocate and to secure the funding and make sure this is actually done and completed in a timely manner. But traffic is certainly the first priority. Secondly, as with Jesse, climate action is critical. Did I already use up my minute, or?
Linda, I'm not sure. That seemed kind of quick. Maybe she meant to go to yellow. There we go. It happened.
Oh, well, climate action. Recently, Napa Climate Now nominated me as a climate champion, and I was instrumental in developing an interim climate action plan for the city. And lastly, grooming our next generation of leaders. It's time for people like me to transition out and to groom or build our bench to make sure we have more people who are qualified, capable, and ready to serve when they get elected and not learn during their first term in office. So those would be the three priorities I focus on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And now, the second question, and we will start with David. What are your ideas for balancing increased housing needs while mitigating the traffic impact?
You know, this is a regional issue. We need the rest of the county to focus on South County traffic because a lot of the workers are down here. My idea is, if we're going to mitigate lower housing prices, we need to build more housing. American Canyon is a good place to do that at all income levels. The parallel road system I talked about needs to happen. We need the rest of the county to focus on that and come this way for that. You can build and mitigate this traffic. If Up County can build a little bit more housing, maybe we can put some of our workers there as well so that we don't have a community.
Great, thank you. And Mark, same question. What are your ideas for balancing increased housing needs while mitigating traffic impact?
First, I want to emphasize that much of the congestion in American Canyon isn't our traffic generated by our housing. It's more the cut-through commuters. Talking to residents and voters, that's a common misconception. But much beyond that, the key strategy for me would be a job-housing balance. We have the Green Island industrial park, which is probably our primary workforce location, as well as a lot of housing. So the more we can facilitate getting people to live and work in the same location, the more you create that balance or the more you mitigate the traffic problem. So I think that's a key element. The last one, you know, I would agree. The rest of the valley has to do their fair share. You simply cannot continue growing, you know, low-end jobs without the kind of affordable housing opportunities. Otherwise, you just put all the pressure on traffic, and there just isn't the kind of funding to make those roads as compatible as they need to be. So for me, a job-housing balance is the first priority, and that is how I would pursue it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jesse?
I humbly speak and have to agree with both Mark and David. It's going to be bringing economic growth into the city in order to make sure that where we're living, that the housing is going to be matched, the jobs that are going to be within the town. They're also correct in saying that a lot of the traffic is going towards, you know, the county. They should have some responsibility as well, making sure they have affordable housing. What I think is, if we focus on our city, we focus on our growth, and we look at our community and listen for our community to make sure that we are bringing the jobs that will bring jobs to the city. And then, you know, with the parallel roadways, you know, all the traffic that's going to be on the main road will, will stop. Thank you.
Thank you. And next question kind of goes along with that. We'll start with Mark. What are your ideas for working with the rest of the county to minimize the impact on American Canyon while the county continues to grow?
Um, can you, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question again?
This will be for Mark.
Well, for Mark.
Sorry. We keep rotating. It gets a little confusing at times.
Well, I think the first thing to realize is, come November, there's going to be a new face on the board. With two longstanding supervisors retiring, we are going to have a new board and a new opportunity. In that regard, I think it's important that we reach out and begin talking to the county. For me, probably the first criteria or the first issue would be negotiating our urban limit line or renegotiating our urban limit line to kind of define where our boundaries will be. But certainly, traffic is another area in which I believe the county can assist in providing the funding necessary to secure those kind of parallel roads and the other improvements. But I also think a lot of it is just, we need to meet together. The county as the Board of Supervisors is one vehicle, but the, let's see, the Napa County League of Governments NICLOG is another vehicle, where all the electeds from the cities, the counties, and so forth, all get together on a regular basis. That's another opportunity where you can have a forum to kind of get different views and perspectives and develop a sense of collaboration. So those are the approaches I would take.
Thank you. And Jesse? What are your ideas for working with the county?
I have to agree with Mark in saying that communication is very important. It's very important that it's transparent. And it's definitely, you know, like you said, there's going to be possibly a new face on the board and making sure that they're aware of what's happening in American Canyon. I think that having open communication with all the different cities to understand the issues that we have, you know, within American Canyon and its roadways and how we all can contribute together. So collaboration is important. Communication is important. In that way, we can come to a civil agreement and help. Thank you.
Thank you. And David?
Investing in relationships, which is something that I did earlier this year with our county supervisors. I took four county supervisors down here on a two-hour tour separately, one by one. Me and the mayor drove around, showing them what American Canyon was all about. It was surprising to know that they had never gotten off the highway to see what was going on in American Canyon. We have beautiful wetlands. We have beautiful hills. We have a brand-new high school. We took them to a town center that's about to be built. It really is a city on the move. And getting them to understand that and all the issues that comes with that is something that I plan to do moving forward. And we're going to continue to having those conversations so that they can understand and then make smart policy decisions of what, for American Canyon and for the county.
Thank you. And now, for this question, we will start with Jesse. Jesse, American Canyon Police often need to respond to crimes that originate outside the city. What is your opinion on county and neighboring cities' coordination and cooperation to ensure the safety of all?
When it comes to public safety, cooperation and collaboration with any, with all the police departments and surrounding cities is going to be very important. I think, again, American Canyon is very safe. Sometime with the exception, we do get out of town. I know there's Fairfield incident. I know there's some from Vallejo. But I do think that if we have, same thing, communication and coordination with our police forces, both with Napa County Sheriff, American Canyon Police, California Highway Patrol, and Vallejo Police, I think that we will be able to address a lot of the issues that occur.
Thank you. And David, same question.
Funny you asked that question because last night, or maybe a couple, you know, it was on Sunday night, one of our American Canyon Police officers ended up at the Presidio in San Francisco on a high-speed chase. Collaborations, it took several counties and as well as the CHP to bring that to an end. Really supportive of it. Been a big backer of the police. I'm glad to say that the Napa County Sheriff, Oscar Ortiz, is endorsing my campaign. And during the social unrest in 2020, there was a time there where we had to step up to help our police in American Canyon.
Thank you. And Mark?
Well, I would agree that collaboration and mutual aid are important for public safety, both police and fire, and I would certainly support it 90% of the time. There are some instances where a jurisdiction might do some land use planning that can, you know, kind of tilt the pattern a little bit. So if you put something on our borders that might generate more public safety calls than you might normally expect, that may be an area where it may be appropriate to sit down with that jurisdiction and try to negotiate something to be reasonable. But in general, I agree, collaboration is critical. I think developing our police department, as we have over the years, has been great with the service contract with the county. It's an issue that I helped work on as a city manager. I do have been endorsed by Sheriff Ortiz. So for me, collaboration is important, but you always have to be leery when there's the opportunity for abuse and to deal with that appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, for the next question, we will start with David. David, how will you work on recruiting and retaining highly qualified staff?
Well, that is a challenge right now, and I think it's a challenge across all industries. The way to do that is to have a great city, to have a city that is full of excitement and potential. And I think that we're doing that in American Canyon so that people want to move here. We have all of the elements for what makes a Great Bay Area city. The weather, the access to open space, the foot of Napa Valley at the edge of the urban bay. I think if we get the city right in terms of how we want to move forward in the future, we can begin to attract talent. We've attracted talent in the past. There's just a lot of job opportunities elsewhere where people are taking opportunities where they can. It's going to be a challenge.
Definitely. And Mark, same question.
Yes, well, I would agree with David on that one. The better you can build your community, the better you can make it an appealing place to work, you will attract people. Because at some point, we live in an area that is frankly expensive to live, and that puts pressure on raising salaries just to be competitive, just to allow people to live here. So making the city an exciting place is important. Focusing beyond just the organization, focusing on how do you make your housing more affordable? How do you create better-paying jobs and better-paying industries? Those are all key elements in making it happen. But by and large, the recruiting and retaining people is a challenge. I have done a lot of that in my years as a manager, and I will tell you, even under the best circumstances, your odds are not as good as you think they might be. So the more you can do to increase your percentage of hiring good people better and retaining them is all about good leadership and good management skills, treating them right. So those are the basic strategies I try.
Thank you. And Jesse, to you.
So I agree with them both. However, for me, I think it begins with our education in our schools from the programs we have in high school that can develop our students to become, you know, whether it's the medical field, IT field, construction, or the police or fire department that we develop within our city. And they're correct in making sure that our leadership is in place and intact and know how to nurture and manage. I think that living here in American Canyon, it is expensive, but I think that the families come here because of the education. And Napa County is very, their reputation is big. So I think that we would be able to do it, but we have to reach back into our high schools and provide those opportunities of training for future positions, not only within American Canyon, but within the leadership in American Canyon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, the next question, we will start with Mark. What is your opinion about the adequacy, both short-term and long-term versus sustainability of the water supply?
Well, I think in the short, the really short term, like the next two or three months, in talking to our city manager, we seem to have enough water supply, so we're good till hopefully the rainy season. So that's the really short term. The intermediate, then, would be reliance on recycled water. Years ago, when we decided to build our own wastewater treatment plant, part of that decision was the recognition that we would have recycled water. And we're looking at expanding that capacity again to some extent because if we could bring in more wine waste, for example, that would generate additional recycled water. Longer term, the site's reservoir, as David pointed out, is certainly a key element. But we also need to be thoughtful about other strategies. Bringing all that water through to American Canyon still goes through, I think, the Barker Slough, and there are some environmental choke points there. So the more we can pursue water that's on this side of that slough, the better. So for me, those are some of the things to be concerned about. But in the short run, we're good to go for at least the next three months. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jesse, same question.
You know, that's, you know, and I agree with Mark as well, knowing that we do have enough water supply, and that's a reflection of, you know, being proactive versus reactive when we entered the drought. Being one of the only cities, or one of the first cities to have our own recycled water is amazing. So, you know, the conservation that we put out there as well with the recycled water is very helpful. For the long term, I'd like for, you know, for the city to continue to stay, you know, the cutting edge of what's out there to maintain water rationing when needed and also to, you know, maintain and encourage conservation. Water is very important, you know, to all aspects of our life. Thank you.
Thank you. And David?
Yeah, so American Canyon actually leads in conservation of water. Our recycle water program is award-winning. We have, for any new development, a zero-water footprint policy, meaning you're not going to build new here unless you can bring your own supply of water that matches the amount you use or fix a supply of water within the city that is used. So you could fix a leaking pipe in our city, and that would bring a zero-water footprint policy. It really is down to this site's water project. It's going to put us with 4,000 acres a year, like I stated earlier. But really, the reality is, it has to rain. Particularly for us in American Canyon, until that thing is built in 2030, it has to rain. If it doesn't rain, it isn't American Canyon's fault. The whole state of California is going to be in The whole state of California is going to be in trouble in the Western United States. I think we're there, long term solution. Short term, we're doing all we can, but it has to rain.
Great, thank you. And now with this next question, we will start with Jesse. And Jesse, what do you see as a role of the police department in terms of creating trust with at risk communities?
You know, the police department, it's very important. It's going to be twofold in the sense that they have to maintain and enforce the laws of our land. They have to enforce everything that's responsible for people that that is going to be considered a felony or a misdemeanor. But I also think that they have a great opportunity to encourage communication, be more part of the community in a sense that, for example, and athletically, the police athletically in in American Canyon, something like that where they're they're visible constantly in schools, like, you know, just visiting, having days out there where they're working within community. And then those that are at risk are going to be those that you have to use a lot of patience with them. You have to listen to them, you know, you have to be able to not only be the policeman, you also have to be sometimes when you're in field, the psychologist, and it's going to be the safety for the officer and and for the person.
Thank you. Thank you. And David.
It's about being a part of the community. It's about police, not just in their cars calling on a call, but talking and interacting with citizens. We do that through a number of events here in American Canyon. City events like Fourth of July. We in the city split with the school district, the Community Resource Officer, which is a uniformed police officer at the middle school and the high school, creating opportunities, create relationships with those behind the badge. It really is a part of just being in the community, being involved and welcoming them as part of our community. We remain safe. There's a strong support for the city of our city police department here. And it's played out even during the the riots and the upheaval during the social unrest in 2020. Our city remains safe and calm.
Great, thank you. And Mark, to you.
In general, I would agree with with Jesse and David both. Building trust is something that you just have to do on a day to day basis. And certainly the community service officers and the school resource officers that the council's been able to fund for the last several years is a key play, a key part in in building that trust. Likewise, shortly after I got on the council, we resurrected the National Light Out Program, which has been a very successful event annually. And it's a great opportunity where both police and fire can can work with the community and and build that mutual trust. You know, at some point though, police can only go so far. They do, like Jesse said, they do have a responsibility to enforce the law and sometimes it's hard to be your best buddy when when you're breaking the law. So they can go so far, but we also need to work with the county and health and human resources, mental health services and other areas to supplement that initial investment, that initial relationship building. So, thank you.
Thank you. And now for the next question, we will start with David. How do you plan to encourage and finance the building of affordable and mid price housing?
We require it for mostly new developments. It's something that that has to happen. I'm not a big fan of taking in low fees, although we have done that in the past. But requiring builders to do that as a responsibility of the development and the community. American Canyon is a very diverse community, not in just terms of ethnic, ethnic ethnicity, but in socioeconomics. There are people across all the spectrums here and it's actually very rich. And it also makes the community that much more special. We're requiring that for us, for us, and all new housing will have that. We've been a big supporter of, there's two affordable housing projects being built right now, one on Broadway, one in Watson Ranch, and I'm hoping, I know that the one in Watson Ranch is pretty state of the art. It's a modular building. We're looking to see what happens here on the highway. We also have our veterans homes too, so it's all income levels and up and down the spectrum. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Mark.
Yes, I I would agree that American Canyon has done a terrific job addressing affordable housing and we have actually exceeded our RENA numbers, Regional Housing Needs Assessment numbers, even for low and very low. So that part's very good. And I'm particularly proud of the fact that some years back, we had the opportunity to go from a 10% affordability up to 15. And I advocated on behalf of the of moving it up to 15%. So now all new development has to have at least 5% very low, 5% low and 5% moderate. So that also increased the the supply. And lastly, as I mentioned earlier, working on the jobs housing balance is critical. Affordable housing can can cost more if you've got a job that pays more. So we can work with affordable housing by also increasing better paying jobs in our industrial park and along our retail corridor. So those are all strategies that can help us get the affordability that we need. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And now for the next question, Mark, you will start. In the past year, the city, our cities and county have declared a climate emergency and committed to achieving net zero climate pollution by 2030. If elected, what actions would you champion to drive emergency level mitigation measures?
Ms. Brooks?
Yeah.
I didn't get the opportunity to respond to the housing.
Oh, I'm very sorry.
That's okay.
Please go ahead, Jesse.
I won't, I won't be lying at all. So both both Mark and and David are correct with regards to American Canyon being at the forefront and creating affordable housing. I also agree with with regards to job balance within our own city to establish, you know, that that affordability. Also, I would say, you know, step out the box. What about Habitat for Humanity? Maybe there's an area that we can have the people in the community build houses for people within the community. That's something to think about as well. But that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm very sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
Look to square. Little chart here. Okay, we'll go back to the question and back to Mark. Up in our question about climate emergencies and what actions you would champion to drive emergency level mitigation measures.
All right. Well, thank you for the question. As you may know, I am also on the Countywide Climate Action Committee and was the Chair of the interim or ad hoc climate action committee on this council. So I do have a lot of experience in this area. I have advocated the idea of of taking steps that move the needle instead of just passing resolutions or symbolic gestures. In general, the big strategy is shift as much as you can to electric and shift as much electric to renewables. And that's the broad strategy and then ultimately reduce the amount of energy you need in the first place. So there we, the interim ad hoc committee developed an interim plan that had over 30 proposals from expanding our bike lanes to increasing electric vehicles to improving the energy efficiency of our homes and additional solar, solar installations and battery backup. So there's a wide array of things and I would need five or 10 minutes at least to to go over everything. But I'm very proud of what I've been involved in and I think I will probably do an excellent job pursuing climate action for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Jesse, to you for that same question.
You know, and and I agree, championing climate, you know, climate control is very important. And I I also think that going from electric, shifting everything to electric and then going within renewables is very important. I think, you know, the use of solar with the majority of the the homes that are being built by using stuff that is energy efficient will be also helpful. But also, you know, to be again proactive versus reactive, doing the studies necessary to make sure that, you know, all families and all houses, because we have, we do have a a new built, you know, American Canyon, then we have an older American Canyon. The houses were built in the 60s and the 50s. So we have to make sure that there's going to be availability to those homeowners as well to be able to bring up their ability to save energy as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And David, to you.
Yeah, I, you know, I think there's a lot of small things that you can do right away, right? There's many steps to that in in terms of renewable energies. We're, we need to, we're trying to convert everybody in American Canyon to get rid of their lawns, to have drought tolerant lawns. We implemented solar panels for all of Watson Ranch project as a requirement, and then the state went ahead and did that as well. We banned gas stations in American Canyon, one of the last ones being built. I've called for a bike for a city. That's obviously very friendly in terms of the environment. Thinking through though, there's a lot of little things that we can do. The conversation needs to shift to something bigger and debating. And I'm not saying I'm supporting it neither way, but that's just a concept of geoengineering, right? How much can we actually ask residents to do to turn off a water tap and save some, a little bit here and there? It adds up to a lot. But will it be enough in the future? There are some scientific and exciting technologies out there that should be explored beyond the individual.
Great, thank you very much. And now for the next question, we'll start with Jesse. What are your thoughts about how to improve Highway 12 and 29 to improve traffic flow and minimize the impact on American Canyon? I think this has been somewhat covered, but.
Highway 12 and 29. So, you know, that's that's going to be, I mean, the question of the day because traffic is going to be a tremendous issue. I know that they're looking at overpasses and everything like that. They're trying to establish. I know they're looking at roundabouts. They're trying to establish as well. There, there is definitely no quick fix, you know, a lot of the way, the only way we're going to really fix anything is going to be making sure that the the traffic that goes through every day, you know, doesn't happen or we can reduce it. I remember City Councilman David had mentioned giving 100 cars off 29 is going to be helpful and I agree with that. And so we just have to look at ways that we can do that. So working with Napa County, working with Caltrans, you know, again, collaboration, communication. And and have to realize that you can't get it always 100% one way and 100% the other way. But if you get it 50 50, it sounds like both win, both sides win. Thank you.
Thank you. And David, to you.
Parallel roads, been talking about them for a while now. We're building them. Let's complete this west side connector on town, on the side of town. You know, if you build a west side connector completely in American Canyon, from the house, from the Safeway in American Canyon, you can travel on the west side to the Napa DMV without ever getting on the highway. Not too many people know that, but you can. Parallel road on the east side of town. There's an opportunity to take that from Green Island Road and Newell Drive all the way up to South Kelly, where the flea market is. We should do that. But let's forget about, you know, internal combustion engine within a car or an electric vehicle. Big idea, and I would love to see it. It's going to take the weight of everybody, state, local and federal. Can we get rail in here? There, there is a rail line that goes up and down and hits the heart of every town. Stops right near our future town center, stops at the college, stops in downtown Napa and all the other towns in Napa Valley. Let's talk about rail.
Thank you. And Mark.
Well, I would agree that parallel roads is an important strategy along with the 29 transformation that that we're currently working with Caltrans on. All of that will help. Beyond that though, you know, number one, I think Up Valley needs to do their part. The more housing that they can work on, the better, because that will begin to provide some housing for their employees and they they don't need to come from out of county. And that of course gets back to that jobs housing balance. The more you can have people live and work in the same general area, the better it is. A, they don't need to go on those, you know, that huge commute. But the other one is, as you get within a five mile radius from work, the opportunity to bike to work goes up dramatically. Studies have shown most trips are within five miles and a bike can do that pretty easy. So again, we need to focus sometimes on on issues that are, you know, the immediate crisis of of relieving traffic is important. But look at the bigger issues as well and the opportunities to make systemic improvements by approaching it from a different angle. Thank you.
Thank you. And now with this next question, we will start with David. David, American Canyon is known as a family oriented city. What are your ideas to fund and maintain the city's parks and open spaces?
Focus. We need to do that right now. Listen, I was on the Open Space Advisory Committee. We're having a debate on Wednesday that's coming up to us. How do we reconstitute that and see that? It's a special meeting that we're having. It's a very important part of it. I think we need to prioritize improving our parks and open space. And it's a different stage now from when I first got on board to where it was about access. Now it's about maintenance and improvement. And that is going to take a little bit more investment, not just from the city in terms of possibly hiring staff to see this, right? We're becoming a little bit of a district to watch our own open space, but also creating and working with volunteer opportunities throughout the region because the most successful open space areas have a public private partnership or a volunteer partnership. And we need to make that happen.
Thank you. And Mark, the same question.
Well, first, to put it in perspective, our vision statement references our natural beauty and open space amenities. So open space and parks is an essential element. It's it's part of our character DNA. And I'm proud to have been a key player years back in securing both the new open space and the wetlands areas that are kind of the foundation for that open space when I was city manager back in in the early years. Beyond that, we also need to set dollars aside to maintain our parks and open space areas. It's another issue I've been talking about. Because if you don't set that dollars aside, you end up with the inability to address it. Right now, we just adopted a five year capital plan in which we have a $5 million gap between what we want to do with our parks and the money we've identified. So those are the kinds of concerns. It's great to appreciate the open space and I certainly do. But we also have to make sure we take care of it and that involves making tough decisions sometimes on the funding as well as in terms of securing that open space and maintaining it. So I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this.
Thank you. And Jesse.
Bernie, can you repeat the question for me again, please?
Yes, certainly. American Canyon is known as a family oriented city. What are your ideas to fund and maintain the city's parks and open spaces?
You know, I think that both both David and Mark and and I share the same thing that are, we love our city and the community is very important. You know, having the open space is good for our families, but but when we talk about those under, say, stress, you know, it's definitely to ride a bike in the area or to play at a park will help that stress, that help your mental health. I think funding it, it should be something that should be a priority. Money should be set aside and we should be able to try and maintain. But we do have a drought, so it's hard to keep our grasses green. But on the same token, I do like, you know, the mention of volunteers helping with the parks, having programs out there where, you know, children, like we did when we did the cleanup, as go out there and families go out there and take pride in in what they do with the parks. Financially, that's something that we have to look at because sometimes open space and park and recs don't get that recognition, but we we have to consider it because it's very important to the families.
Thank you. And now for this last question, before we move to the closing statement, we will start with Mark. The question is, what do you see as American Canyon's role in working on to lessen the impact of rising sea level on Highway 37 and on other regional issues?
Well, we we can't play too much of a role, especially on 37, other than to be supportive, to secure funding and it's 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 a project that is measured in billions of dollars. So that's out of my league even. But there are some things we can do here at home. We know along our our coastline, if you will, there's lands that we're, that are going to be changed impacted by sea level rise. And we need to be sensitive to that and make sure that they are essentially off limits for any development. So from my perspective, the easiest way we can address it is by doing what we can in our own boundaries and our own on our banks. And then certainly support regional efforts as much as we can because as 37 is improved, for example, it's probably taking pressure off of 29 because there's getting to be people who will take 29 and then 121 because no matter how crowded you think we are, it's not as bad as 37. So, you know, that's kind of crazy. So it's in our best interest to do what we can to collaborate and advocate, but also do what we can here at home.
Thank you. And Jesse, the same question.
You know, I I'm, I'm going to say that I agree. Highway 37 is going to be something that's not so much out of jurisdiction, but it is part of where we live and how we get to American Canyon. I've walked the the wetlands and I know that the water rise and everything like that, that they have over there and and it's it's can be, you know, challenging some households and everything like that. But I think that we have to go back to collaborating with with all the governments, with federal, state and county to determine what's going to be best way to to handle Highway 37. For now, what we can do as our part as a city is is to maintain. To handle Highway thirty-seven. For now, uh, what we can do as our part as a city is, is to maintain status quo to make sure that. You know, we are paying attention to, to our lands and making sure that we are making, um, whatever necessary changes. We gotta get grants. We need to levy grants for, for things that to happen. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And David to you.
Well, if you subtract eight from thirty-seven, you end up with twenty-nine and that's my focus, really. Highway twenty-nine is a focus. We've been spending years on this. And actually twenty-nine isn't even my focus. It's these parallel roads. Again, I promised, uh, years ago that, you know, I would build parallel roads before Caltrans ever widen that highway. And I think, uh, I, I will. I will win that bet. Thirty-seven is an issue in terms of it has to be done. But it's remarkable that it's going to have probably a toll road and it's going to punish us on this side of the bay again. That we have to go back and forth using that on a daily basis because a lot of workers that live, work in Marin, live here. Listen, I'm going to leave that up. To supportive of expanding that, I'm going to leave that up to the people that were appointed to make that happen. Um, I think they're getting there, uh, but, uh. You know, i- it's going to be a tough one. We're going to focus on twenty-nine. And the parallel roads.
Thank you. And now we move to the closing statements and David, you will be first. One minute.
Thank you. Um, well, first of all, thank you for this opportunity to present to everyone here today. This will be my second term on council. I was appointed in twenty seventeen, was elected in twenty eighteen. At this point in a. In being on council, it's about just about the right time, right? Five or six years. I deserve a, I, I believe I deserve a second chance on, uh, second term on council to finish what we've gotten, what we've been doing. Uh, the, the, the Broadway corridor, Watson Ranch project. Uh, our Green Island area. Lots to go on here that started on my watch. Believe I get a second chance to do that and I will be focusing not on the big stuff, but on the smaller things. Our parks, a bike program, a, a bike-first city. And improving recreational programs for. All aspects of, of, of our city, seniors, families and children. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mark, you were next.
All right. Uh, well, I also, uh, want to basically, I'm running for reelection to, to finish the job that I've started as well, particularly on traffic. But also on some of the newer exciting projects like climate action and helping to groom that next generation of leaders. So that's why I'm asking for your support and I also want to emphasize that. Others have thought highly of me as well. I've been endorsed by the, the local firefighters union, the central labor council, the Napa County Democratic Central Committee, even the farm bureau. Congressman Thompson, Senator Dodd, Assemblyperson Aguilar Curry. Sheriff Oscar Ortiz as well, Vice Mayor Abudalmas. And the person I'm most proud of frankly is, uh. Kind of the first mother of American Canyon Fran Lemos. So with all of those, uh, supporting me, I hope you will give me another chance for another four years to finish the job and do what I can to help. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jesse.
So I, of course, I'm the new kid on the block. So I would like to say, um, you know, what I represent change. I represent. Fresh ideas. I represent, uh, cutting edge. One of the things I may not have the experience in say city council, but I do have experience as a leader. And I do live in the community and experience things in the community. There's a lot of things that we can do that I look at. I mean, we look at affordable housing. We should also look at, uh, you know, no farmer housing. And then with regards to climate change. What about shuttles and zip cars? I mean, things like that. Uh, roadways and our lights, we can use, you know, uh. Uh, solar panel, but more importantly, uh, with, with my intention being on city council is to champion the future. And the way you do that is you do that through IU, you do that through our community, you do that through listening, you do that through communication. And, and you continue what, you know, the success that has been created and you just take it further. So, you know, again, very honored to be here. Uh, thank you for having this and, um, I look, I look forward to serving as city council in the future.
Thank you very much. And to the candidates, on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Napa County, I really thank you for your time to participate in this forum. And for your willingness to serve the Napa community by even running for office. And now we will end this portion of the evening. And we will, uh, move on to, I will be giving just a brief overview of the two measures that American Canyon voters will see on their ballot. And let me get that shared up. Okay. Nope, nope. I'm sorry, the wrong one came up. There we go. Is that being shared? Okay, great. All right. So there's two bond measures that American Canyon and only American Canyon voters will see. And the first one being. Measure A two, which is a school bond measure from the Napa Valley Unified School District, but for Area Two, American Canyon. And the measure is to provide classrooms, facilities, technology. To support the instruction, math, science, engineering, fixed roofs, plumbing, electrical systems. Repair and upgrade the classrooms. But all of this is actually just for American Canyon schools. And the air, the measure, oh, I'm sorry. The measure is looking for authorization for twenty-five million dollars in bonds. And the rates would be two cents per hundred dollars assessed value. And they expect that that will bring in two billion dollars a year. While the bonds are outstanding. And it will have independent citizen oversight and all the money will stay in American Canyon. And it's a yes or no vote whether you vote for, um. This measure to be passed or not. Measure J is the second measure that the City of American Canyon voters will see. And that's a measure to say shall the, so a hundred and fifty-seven acres. That are currently owned by Green Island property. Be added to the City of American Canyon's urban limit line. And to amend the general plan to expand potential. City industrial development to be adopted. Yes or no? So those are the two measures. So now first off, what do you need to know about measure A two? Well, it has to be approved by fifty-five percent or more yes votes. The district's going to sell bonds over time, which each series approved separately by the Board of Ed. Prior to that series being sold. Principal and interest on the bonds will be payable from proceeds of the taxes upon taxable property. Based on your assessed valuation, not your market evaluation, but your assessed valuation. So about twenty dollars per hundred thousand of your property value. The best estimate of the final fiscal year is expected to be twenty-sixty or twenty-sixty-one. So this is going to go out for quite some time. The actual tax rate in the years may vary a little from this estimate. The Napa Valley School Board and the district staff looked at all the different things that are needed by the schools and developed together with. Groups in, in the city, a project list. And the project list includes. Uh, it's not guaranteed that every project on the list will be funded or completed, but those will be the ones with the priorities. The bonds will not be used, can, cannot be used for salaries or other school operating expenses. All of this is for upgrades and repairs. The Board of Ed will appoint a citizen oversight committee. And conduct annual independent audits to assure that the funds are spent only on the voter authorized projects included in that list. And there will be management and oversight of the projects and no other purpose. So then. What the League of Women Voters recommends that when you look at any kind of measure that involves bonds and taxes. That you look at the purpose of the measure. Is the tax needed to fund that proposal or are there some other alternatives? Who's paying the burden of the tax? How much? How long? What's the cost of the debt and how is it repaid? The effect on total tax and debt? What will happen if the tax does not pass? How will it be used? Do you trust the entity to perform for what the measure is, is basing it on? And is there oversight? And for school bonds, it's always required that there is oversight. So Legal Women Voters is not recommending a yes or no vote. But we're just saying, look at both what the measure says it is. Think of these questions when you look at it yourself and then decide for yourself if it's a yes or no. Oh. Um, okay, so I don't know what happened here to my slide, but. The main thing, uh, as a pro for this, that these are all out on the Napa County Elections, uh, website as well. That there's a group, the yes on measure A two group, and the names are below. Who have signed on to that. And they're saying the most pressing needs of the American Canyon schools will be handled. Provide classrooms, labs and equipment for instructions so students are prepared for college and in-demand jobs. Improve student safety and campus security systems. Update older school facilities so they meet the same academic and safety standards as the newer schools. Repair and replace worn-out roofs, floors, walkways, lighting, plumbing, ventilation. And the playfields, play structures and playgrounds which serve the entire community would be renovated for safety. And all the funds raised by measure A two will stay in the community to benefit local children. No money can be taken from the state or used for other purposes. And none of the funds are used to pay for salaries or administrators. These are the names of those who signed on to the pro on the website. And on the county website, there was no, uh. Con listed, so this, uh, while they're, you know, yes, the, the main thing is taxes. And so there's clear accountability. Uh, it's the same thing. Sorry, my slides are jumbled together here. But that's what A two is about. And how to think about it and the pro arguments from people in your community. Now to measure J. Measure J. If approved by a majority of the voters, which just means fifty percent plus one. Would add a hundred and fifty-seven undeveloped acres owned by Green Island property to the city two thousand and eight urban limit line. And would amend the city general plan to increase the amount of potential industrial development. By over six, almost seven million gross square feet. The property is adjacent to the city limits on its northern and eastern boundary. Receives water and recycled water and fire surfaces from American Canyon Fire Protection District already. The proposed amendment to the city general plan would only become effective. Upon annexation of the property to the city. The property was the subject of several expert consultants analysis as to its lack of agricultural viability. At the June sixth, twenty-twenty-two public hearing by LAFCO. And if approved, measure J would become effective January one, twenty-twenty-three. The amended ULL may only be amended by the voters. Voters of American Canyon get to decide if this is going to happen or not. And if we look again to the Napa County Elections website. There are pro arguments. That this property belongs inside the city limits. It's already being handled by American Canyon. It's on its borders. We have, it has water and utilities and fire protection and police protection. Taxes on this property could reduce the city's traffic problems. Ag is not viable on this property based on that analysis. Uh, that I mentioned before, measure J will help address water shortages, according to LAFCO. Because the struggling vine, vine, vineyard continues to be irrigated with a mix of potable recycle water. It's an inefficient use of water resources at a time when. All water customers throughout Napa County are subject to different levels of water conservation restrictions. The city will control any future development on that land. And several citizens and groups names are below. The con arguments are that measure J would expand American Canyon's voter-approved growth boundary. And it's a for, first step toward building warehouses, office buildings and concrete parking lots. A land that is now ag open space watershed. Our wetlands are extremely important for the sustenance and ecological balance of our local shoreline. Measure J will destroy habitat for migrating birds and local wildlife. The facts presented are more industry, more traffic congestion and water use. Residents are already being asked to cut twenty percent of their water use, yet measure J promises more industrial parks and commercial buildings. Fact, the initiative is misleading and mistakes that the land is not viable for agriculture. The land is being currently used for vineyards, not impacted by saltwater intrusion and is capable of being used even more productively with proper stewardship. The next statement for con is the sponsors gathered signatures from citizens with promises of improved traffic and benefits. Having nothing to do with the potential future plans. The sponsors of measure J are property investors who are not looking to promote the highest good for our community. They are interested in personal gain. The next con argument is approval of this initiative may be a dangerous precedent that could be used to further erode our history of ag land protection. Everyone should have access to clean air, water and recreational opportunities. Measure J will negatively impact. Recreational, walking, hiking, biking, open space now available to all residents in American Canyon. And the last. Uh, comment from the con measure is climate change is real. Measure J does not consider the impact of seawater rise, increased carbon emissions, increased water consumption. Or the impact on the future of families in our city. And that was stated and posted there by Yvonne Boginsky, the No Unmeasured J Committee. So once again, League of Women Voters is not suggesting. Uh, yes or a no vote on this. These are what are out there in the Napa County Elections website. We're just trying to highlight to those that are attending this forum. What the pro arguments are, what the con arguments are for you to read about them, think about them and make your own decision. And. And so before I turn it back to Cindy to close us out. We want to remember, remind everyone that there is a timeline for voter registration. And where to vote and. I have these slides up, but I think Cindy is going to bring those up. So I will put this down and turn it back to Cindy and then I will bring these up later. Cindy, I turn it back over to you.
We especially thank the audience for joining this session to meet the candidates. And for proposing your thoughtful questions. For further information about or to submit questions for our upcoming forums. To learn about all the candidates and ballot measures. Links to our Voters Edge Guide and other election information. Please visit the League's easy-to-use website, l w v napa dot org. If you would like to be involved with the League of Women Voters, both men and women are helping to make democracy work for everyone. It's easy to join. Just visit our website. It's easy to join. Just visit our website. A reminder, but the deadline to register to vote and still get a ballot in the mail is October 24. You can register and vote conditionally in person up until 8:00 PM on November 8 at a vote center or the election office. If you have moved or changed your name or wish to change your party affiliation since you last registered, you need to re-register. Also, please remember to sign the back of your ballot and ensure your signature matches with the one with which you are registered. To check on your registration or to track your ballot, see votersedge.org. If you vote by mail in Napa County, you can avoid any postal delays by using one of the many drop boxes in Napa. All drop boxes and the elections office vote center will be available starting Monday, October 10 at 8:00 AM. For the Dropbox locations and information on the other vote center locations and opening dates, see our Napa County elections site. The link is in the chat. The election department would like us to announce that we need more vote center workers to pay as good for a few weeks of work. For details, see the County of Napa Elections webpage. Finally, please encourage your family, friends, and neighbors to vote in this election. Every vote counts. Thank you, and we.
Thank you all.